Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the October 11, 2011 Glendale City Council meeting. Can we have a roll call, please?
Council members. Manukian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Quintero?
Here.
Weaver?
Here.
Mayor Friedman?
Here. Tonight's flag salute will be led by Councilmember Najarian.
If you'll all please rise and place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and as thousands of American families face this terrible disease, we think of them and pray for them, as we also remember the many who have succumbed to this terrible disease as well. In her book, You Learn By Living, Eleanor Roosevelt said that, quote, "You gain strength, courage, and confidence by every experience in which you really stop to look, fear, and the face." We pray for those who are facing this great disease and are suffering from breast cancer and pray for their loved ones. Grant them strength as they help those they love who are suffering to not face this fear alone. We pray for all people who are working to eradicate this disease and who have dedicated their lives to making this world a better place through healing and therapy and providing comfort. Their work touches humanity and brings us all closer together. But most of all, we pray for healing and we pray for hope. Amen.
Thank you. Can we hear your report, please?
Agenda for the October 11, 2011 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on Thursday, October 6, 2011, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item?
Presentation and appointments. That's 3A is the agenda preview for the meetings of October 18, 2011.
Beers?
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, for the Glendale Housing Authority, we have no business agenda items for the 18th. For the Glendale Redevelopment Agency, we also have no business agenda items. That afternoon commencing at 2:30, we do have a City Council and Glendale Redevelopment Agency meeting. And this joint meeting is a public hearing. Director of Community Development proposed mixed use. Project Lex on Orange to be located at 320 through 324 North Central Avenue, 208 West Lexington Drive, and 317 through 345 North Orange Street. That evening for the City Council meeting, we have a number of consent items. The City Council meeting starts at 6:00 PM. Director of Public Works regarding the Fiscal 2011-2012 Americans with Disabilities Act, curb ramp installation and sidewalk repair program. Director of Public Works, this is regarding contracts with consultants for geotechnical soils engineering and materials testing, report review services for various capital improvement projects. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, electric vehicle refund for installation program. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, this is regarding consultant for risk management services. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, extension of the City of Glendale's participation in a service agreement between Alliance for Cooperative Energy Services Power Marketing LLC, the Southern California Public Power Authority, and participating members. Under action items, Director of Human Resources, this is the establishment of classification titles and compensation for employees of the City of Glendale. Director of Public Works, this is restricting the use of plastic carryout bags and imposing a 10-cent charge on recyclable paper bags. Director of Libraries and Public Works, architectural services for the Central Library Improvement Project. And lastly, Director of Community Development, proposed ordinance amending Title 12 and 30 of the GMC creating standards and procedures to permit pedestrian signs on the public right-of-way and on public property. And that concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next item?
At 3B is a presentation of a resolution of appreciation to the City of Glendale from Southern California Edison in celebration of their 125th year.
Thank you. And I believe Mark Olson is here to present this.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council, community, Mark Olson, Southern California, Edison. Usually the city will give proclamations, will give resolutions to the community. It's our chance to give one to you in thanking you for being a good partner over our service of 125 years to Southern California. We know you have your own utility, but we do serve surrounding Glendale and we do serve a small portion that was annexed into Glendale. So with this, we're presenting on our 125th year, this resolution from our Board of Directors, our CEO and President, thanking you for being a partner and a good neighbor.
Thank you. Mr. Quintero, would you like to accept this on behalf of the city?
Sure will.
Thank you very much for coming.
What part of Glendale do you serve?
There's a section up above Honolulu and Street in that area, between Honolulu and the 210, that was annexed into the city. That is a small section, kind of on the fringe.
Thank you. Thank you again.
It's true, we usually give these out. We don't receive them.
Feel free to come every week.
Next item?
Gee, you haven't gotten one from the other electric utility, have you?
I know.
No.
At 3C is a proclamation designating October 16 through 22, 2011 as Character Counts Week.
Thank you. And we have several members of the public here to tell us about Character Counts Week.
Mayor Friedman, members of the council, city staff, we're here representing the Character and Ethics Project. My name is Louis Sad and I'm joined here by Stella Fay-Tech, Don Empi, Christine Bubumian and Tom Probst. We're all board members on the Character and Ethics Project, and we don't have a proclamation for you today. We're hoping to get one. But we're here just to talk to you a little bit about Character and Ethics and make sure our community is informed about the Character and Ethics Project. The Character and Ethics Project has many stakeholders. They include people in the business community, the civic community, they include our schools, our youth, and our service organizations throughout our community. Some of the founding partners include the Glendale Unified School District, the Glendale Chamber of Commerce, the City of Glendale, the Glendale News Press, Glendale Community College, among many other founding partners. And with our partners, we've created 12 words of the month that are displayed in classrooms from kindergarten to the 12th grade, and they range from anything from trustworthy to integrity. And they are seen throughout the schools and they're seen throughout our various programs. I'm going to give you an example of three different programs, just so our community is aware. Every several months, we have a community awards program where we have the opportunity to honor men and women from our community by giving them appreciation. They're nominated by another member of the community and we shine a spotlight on them for a brief moment so that the public can see all the good works that our community leaders are doing. We have a youth leadership conference, and that's the organization that I first learned about Character and Ethics from. We have high school students that are paired up with mentors in the adult business community or community leaders of different types, and they're able to be mentored and discuss issues of character and ethics. And more recently, we've added the ACE Program, which stands for the Athletics with Character and Ethics. And so we're promoting, of course, sportsmanship and character and ethics on the field. So we appreciate so much the recognition and the time to make sure our community is aware.
Thank you. Does anyone else from your group want to speak?
Someone else want to?
Well, I'm going to ask a colleague of mine about Standing, Character and Ethics, Mr. Najarian, to present this award.
Oh, wow. Thank you for that compliment.
And why don't you explain to the public how they can nominate someone for a Character and Ethics Award if they want to? Because the nominations come from the public.
Absolutely. If the public would like to nominate someone for the Character and Ethics Program, you can go to our website, which is ethicsproject.org, and find the form online and submit it by two weeks prior to the next scheduled program. Our next program is October 27, which is two Thursdays from this upcoming Thursday. So if you get it in by, I believe that's the 13th or 14th, you'll be able to have it in in time. So ethicsproject.org. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Next item?
At 3D is a proclamation designating the week of October 9 through the 15, 2011 as Fire Prevention Week.
Great. And I think we have Battalion Chief Greg Godfrey here to explain what Fire Prevention Week is all about. It's a little bit self-explanatory, but why don't you?
Yes, definitely is. And in lieu of Battalion Chief Godfrey, I'm Jeff Halpert, Fire Marshal, and also glad that Chief Probst is here as well to join us. Thank you very much for your time and indulging us in reminding the public once again about Fire Prevention Week. It started in 1922, the commemoration of the Great Chicago Fire. But interestingly, that's a very popular fire that most people are aware of. But very interestingly, this very same day, very same night, a much larger fire occurred in Peshtigo, Wisconsin. And in Peshtigo, the death toll and the damage was far greater than the Great Chicago Fire. The Great Chicago itself caused, involved 2,000 acres, 250 people killed, 100,000 homeless, 17,400 structures burned. Pretty staggering numbers. Now, put that aside, very same day, Peshtigo Fire, Wisconsin burned nearly all of northeast Wisconsin, the upper part of Michigan, burned 1.2 million acres and killed 1,200 people that we think we know of, but maybe as much as 2,400 people because the death toll is just too hard to determine exactly. Burned 16 towns and the small town of Peshtigo, which is kind of a pioneering outpost, killed 800 people, half the population, in just an hour. So it's a time to reflect and pause and kind of hit the refresh button, as Five Chief Skoggins likes to say, to remind ourselves about fire prevention. We try to prevent the fire from starting to begin with. We do that through a multitude of efforts. But given that a fire should occur, God forbid, we want to be prepared and know what to do. We all know the three leading causes of fire, men, women, and children. So this week, in commemoration of Fire Prevention Week, Chief Godfrey and in his office have produced a series of press releases each day that we're releasing to remind the public on a variety of topics. Smoke alarms, being careful about smoking products, about escape planning for your home, fire safety with heating appliances and cooking, and, you know, just again, for a pause and reminder. Just looking at this past few days, literally, on our own fire department logs, yesterday, October 10, 2011, on Parkwood Street, we had a garage fire, which involved improper storage of a barbecue after it was used and brought into the garage and caused a garage fire. And then the day before that, October 9, in the 100 block of North Verdugo, we had an apartment fire in the bedroom from careless smoking. And on October 3, in the 600 block of South Belmont, we had a house fire due to food on the stove, and it was noted that there were no smoke alarms in that house. And sadly enough, NFPA statistics show that 2/3 of home fires are lacking a smoke alarm or a working smoke alarm. And the day before that, October 2, in the 400 block of Piedmont, we had a dryer fire in the apartment building. And on September 30, in the 1100 block of North Central, there was a fire in a commercial building in a bathroom. It's being investigated. It's questionable in terms of its origin. And there was a success story there. The fire sprinkler system in that building controlled that fire, and that's what alerted us to respond to the building in the first place. So again, fire sprinklers do save lives, smoke alarms save lives. Together, you get to as close to 100% protection from fire in your home that's available. So again, thank you very much for your time and glad, again, that you recognize this important matter in Glendale.
Thank you very much for the education. I'm going to ask Councilmember Manukian to present the proclamation. Are there any resources online that members of the community can look at if they wanted to make sure their home was as safe as it could be?
Mayor Friedman, thank you for reminding me, because I forgot to mention that. Thank you for that cue. Our own website, glendalefire.org, has a link on it. Our very first item is a Fire Prevention Week link. Or you can remember firepreventionweek.org. The NFPA has tremendous resources available, and there are a lot of lesson plans, activities for adults, kids, information for every age group. So that's widely, that's available on the Internet.
Great.
You know, when I was mayor, I used to read all these warehouses.
Well, I was reading them and I was getting glares from people.
Okay.
You can read it, though, if you'd like.
That's okay. I'll just present it. Congratulations. Thank you for the good work.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. Thank you very much.
Okay. Next item, please.
At 3 is a proclamation designating October 2011 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, November 2011 as Domestic Violence Prevention Month.
And we have Seroptimists here.
Honorable Mayor Friedman, council members, staff, good evening. My name is Lysmer Zion, President of Seroptimist International of Glendale, and with me are also members of our Seroptimist Club. We are honored and very thankful to receive this joint proclamation on behalf of our region governor, region board, and Seroptimists all over the world. Tonight, the City of Glendale again becomes part of history by joining other cities within the state of California on this region-wide Color Me Pink and Purple project. The color pink is associated with breast cancer. Breast cancer is a form of cancer that attacks all economic segments of society in all cultures and in all countries of the world. There are many excellent organizations that deal with breast cancer, from research to care to support. I have with me this evening Save the Date cards for Seroptimist International of Glendale's Bras for a Cause celebrates the holidays taking place on April 28, 2012, at the Egmont Country Club. This fundraising event supports breast cancer services at our three local hospitals, Glendale Aventis Medical Center, Glendale Memorial, and Verdugo Hills Hospital. The color purple is associated with domestic violence. Domestic violence is a serious and violent social problem that exists at the workplace and at home. I have with me save cards to share with you. These cards are meant to be placed in the workplace, at schools, doctors' offices, in ladies' restrooms, wherever you feel that a woman might frequent that area. They have the national and local contact phone numbers for victims of domestic violence. Seroptimist International of Glendale will be distributing these cards during the month of November. Seroptimists are actively bringing about awareness of these two serious issues to as many communities as we can, and we hope to continue doing so for many more years. Thank you for declaring the month of October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month and the month of November as End Domestic Violence Month. We hope the City of Glendale will continue to be part of this project, not just during the months of October and November, but throughout the entire year and for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Just coincidentally, earlier today during our Housing Authority meeting, we had a presentation about the continuum of care for homeless in our community. And out of about 450 homeless people in the City of Glendale, I noticed that over 60 women and children were homeless because of domestic violence. So this is a huge problem. Everybody knows that breast cancer is a huge problem, but I don't think everybody always recognizes what a huge social and personal problem domestic violence is. So thank you for bringing that message here. I've asked Mr. Weaver to present the proclamation to you.
Thank you.
I too will not read. I'm not, I can, I can tell you that. My dear, myself.
And you are a survivor.
Do you want to introduce the other Seroptimists?
Would you like to step up? Jackie Holly, Kathy Lefkovitz, and Yasmin Beers.
Great. Thank you so much for coming, Liz, and everybody else. Next item, please.
At 3F is a presentation of a check from the Glendale Realtors Association to the K-9 Unit and to the City of Glendale for sponsorship of the K-9s in the Park Event on October 15.
Great. Just as we don't always get proclamations, we even more rarely get checks from the community. So this is really welcome. And we get another visit from our dog.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, and the public.
You're being upstaged, you know.
That's more important. That's what we're here for. I had a speech written, but I'm not going to read it. You'll see Glendale Association Realtors, as always, has wanted and done everything that they can to support the city, support the community and its charitable organizations throughout the city. With that, by understanding the safety of our city and knowing how important the K-9 is for our police department and our own safety, and our homeowners and the community at large, we had committed a donation to the police department that will do a fundraiser or will somehow will commit a dollar's amount to purchase or acquire a duck, a K-9. So with that, we, just about a month, less than a month ago, we did an event, which with that, September 28, we did an event, and with that, we have collected $6,200, which that includes ticket sales and two large donors, which I have a representative here that she's going to talk about those two donors, that they've donated almost $5,000 in amount.
Now, why don't you introduce the rest of your group and the dog to us, to the community, before we bring up the wonderful donors?
Well, with the association, Young Professionals Network Committee, our PR committee chair, which is Kathy Novish, Kathy Laktovic, I guess she doesn't need introduction. Savam Veroni is one of the youngest Realtors in our business and is helping out with the Young Professional Network. Judy Schlegel, she's also in the committee, and she's a past president of the Glendale Association. Rick Barnes, very long time Realtor, and next year is one of the board members. And of course, Judy, sorry, and Judy, Officer Philly. And I have the representative from the Hookah Lounge and Print.com, oh, what was it? I forgot the name. GotPrint, GotPrint.com, she's going to also represent the checks, and we also have a check for her.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Dower Gervais, and I'm happy to be here, representing such a worthy cause for Glendale residents. I appeal to fellow citizens of Glendale to join us in our efforts to support and attend charitable events that assist vital causes such as our very own Police K-9 Unit. On behalf of Varan Harapian and Arma Kunanian, owners of the Hookah Lounge in Glendale, and Athenia Bar and Grill in Sherman Oaks, I'm proud to present this check in the amount of $2,500 to help support the continued good work of Glendale's Police K-9 Unit. We can't wait to meet our new K-9, Robbie. I also have another $2,500 check from GotPrint.com.
Do those fit in the ATM machine?
Yeah. They fit in the back of a Volkswagen.
You can cash. I can't even sign this.
Yes. Here they are. Thank you.
Also, I forgot to mention, we had named our dog to be requested, and we've named it, hopefully, Robbie the K-9. So Robbie the K-9 Realtor. So hopefully, we'll have that wish. Again, thank you for your time, and thank you.
Don't put Robbie.
Thank you. And there is an event this Sunday, correct? Saturday, this Saturday, to raise money for the K-9s. Is somebody going to talk about that later on? You want to, you want to? Okay.
Just wanted to take another moment to talk about the event. It's going to be this Saturday, October 15, at Verdugo Park, from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And it's going to be a lot of fun-filled events for children and dogs alike. We're going to have a Halloween costume contest for your pets also, so bring your pets. There'll be low-cost pet vaccinations for them. We'll be having a pet adoption through the Pasadena Humane Society, as well as having live police K-9 demonstrations throughout the day to show what my partner can do, what she does out there in the field. It's going to be a lot of fun. There's going to be good music, good food as well. So come out there, join us, October 15, this Saturday, at Verdugo Park, from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Are cats also going to be able to be vaccinated, or is it just dogs?
Yes. It's for dogs and cats, and I believe there's also microchipping if you need that.
Great. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you.
We'll see you there. Okay. Next item?
Next item, the City Council on Staff Comments.
Mr. Manukian.
Thank you. Couple of items. As many of you know, I'm opposed to smart meters. I received a suggestion from resident that I thought it was important to relay to the community, and that's the placement of smart meters. And from what I understand, she sent me an email, and this is what it says, "The proactive, excuse me, the proactive way to deal with the problem meters on the exterior of residences is to relocate the meter to another structure, garage, et cetera." And this is possible according to GWP source, and I won't name the source. The homeowner is responsible for all costs, permits, inspection, et cetera. And then she says that the meters are here to stay. Her name is Hazel. I want to thank her for that suggestion. I didn't think of it. I checked my smart meter, and it was on the other side of the garage, far away from my children's bedrooms. But this is, I think, as smart meters come back, I think this is another alternative that we should, in terms of the opting-out option that I believe is coming back. This is another alternative that we should look at, let people know that they can relocate. If the meter is too close to the residence, they can relocate it somewhere where it's not that close to the residence, if they choose to. And in terms of costs, permits, and inspections, I think that's something that we should be looking into as well, in terms of financing it. Other than that, there was one issue that came to mind during the week that I wanted to also bring up, and that's the police building financing. I've asked questions regarding the financing before. However, I would like to, I would like a report regarding how much have we earned on it so far from the beginning? When was it? 2003, was it, or 2002? Our annual return on that investment?
I think it's been almost 10 years now.
Almost 10 years?
So it's 2001 or so.
Annual interest in terms of what we are paying and what we're earning on that instrument, I would appreciate it. So that is all my comments for today. Thank you.
Weaver, any comments?
No.
Mr. Quintero?
Well, I just want to congratulate the Armenian Society of Los Angeles. There was a grand, well, it wasn't a ribbon-cutting, it was just a huge party. Most of us attended. It was very well-attended, and finally, the organization is settled, and I look forward to attending many functions there, and I think they're a great addition to the, to the community, to be back in business, so to speak. And that's about it.
Mr. Najarian?
And just to go off on that, I think it's, it was great to see that the opening invocation of the first gala event at the Armenian Center, Armenian Society's Center, was given by the pastor of the Glendale Presbyterian Church. It's great to see those two organizations come together, and may they long live in harmony and cooperation through their great work that they're both doing for the community and for God. Thank you.
Thank you. If I missed your event this week, it's because I was out of town, so I have nothing to report this week. Are there any staff comments? Mr. Kazakhian?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, there's a very special event going on. Obviously, city clerks offices helping sponsor the K-9s in the park event, but also I happen to wear another hat as a member of the Glendale Kiwanis. Now, within the Kiwanis, there's a tradition that anytime you appear on TV or you're in the paper, you have to pay a fine. I've been remiss in that, so I probably racked up quite a bill in that regard, but I'm hoping to get amnesty from having to pay such a large fine if I allow the Glendale Kiwanis. Some of them are shaking their heads, saying I still have to pay the fine. But if I allow an announcement about this very special event taking place at Verdugo Park this weekend, the same day as the K-9 in the Events Park, and that is the Kiwanis Duck Splash.
Now, does that duck have purple hair, or is it my imagination?
I could see that.
Just a guess. We had dogs and ducks today.
And you're going to, and you're going to have lots of them on Saturday at Verdugo Park, where we build our Lake Glendale. I'm Sissy Dell, and I'm president this year of the Glendale Kiwanis Club. And Arti? an announcement about this very special event taking place at Verdugo Park this weekend, the same day as the canine in the events park, and that is the Kiwanis duck splash.
Now, does that duck have purple hair or is it my imagination? Just a guess. We had dogs and ducks today.
And you're going to, and you're going to have lots of them on Saturday at Verdugo Park where we build our Lake Glendale. I'm Susie Dell and I'm president this year of the Glendale Kiwanis Club. And Arti, it's not going to get you off, trust me.
It was worth a shot.
But with me tonight is Vince Espinoza, who is our co-chair of the event, and Todd Hunt, who is in charge of volunteers. So if anyone here wants to volunteer, we're taking volunteers. And then our BFF, our big-feathered fowl, Quacky. And Quacky has a presentation to make, but we'll let Vince tell you about it.
Well, first of all, thank you for letting us have this time to promote the race. As you know, most of you are pretty familiar with it, this is our seventh year that we're going to be doing this, so of course, we've got quite a bit of a following and Quacky has made this special duck for you, Madam Mayor.
Oh, wow.
So I don't know what the etiquette on that is, I guess I just can't jump over this railing and give it to you.
I will be happy to come down and get it, but now, can I race, I can't race that duck, but I will.
No, 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 this won't be entered in the race. We do have a race for all the council members that are going to attend the event. I'm not sure exactly what the prize is going to be, but it's probably going to be 15 minutes to speak at our Kiwanis Club, something like that, so very valuable.
I've been training for that.
So like Susie was saying, it's going to be on the 15th, this Saturday. We'll start about 10 o'clock, the council race is about 11:30, so if you have a chance or a window to come by, I encourage you to do that. And we're probably going to be doing this with the canines trying to juggle the events of the day, so it should be really fun and plenty of stuff for kids to do there. So I encourage everybody to come on out and join us for that.
Thank you, Quacky. This is beautiful. It looks a lot like me, too, so thank you.
Okay, duck, duck for you guys. Duck, pass him down. Make sure everybody gets one. Those are for you, kids or whoever, just. I have them in the trunk of my car, so you're doing me a favor. Thank you, thank you very much.
What's next? How can we top that and top the canine?
Next item is consent items. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. A member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before motions are proposed.
Okay, Mr. Menucha.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I know most people are expecting to get home early, however, I would like to pull C, D, and E.
Okay.
C, D, and E.
Madam Mayor, I'll move the other items when I consent.
Okay. Can we have item C, please?
Councilmembers Menucha.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Friedman.
Yes.
Item C is Director of Community Services and Parks Regarding Appropriation of Funds Received From the State of California Employment Development Department To Provide On-the-Job Training and Employment Services For Long-Term Unemployed People For The Electronic Medical Records Field. C1 is a resolution appropriating $350,000 in grant funds to provide funds for the training and employment services.
Mr. Menucha, did you have a question?
I don't have a specific question, I think this is an important issue in terms of appropriating $350,000, $350,000 for training and employment. I think the community should know about it. If you could give details to the community and what profession it's for and where to apply, I would appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Ms. Mayor and council members. We received the $400,000. Pardon me?
You need to state your name for the record.
Don Nakamoto, I'm the administrator of our workforce development. We received a $400,000 grant from the State Employment Development Department and the intent of the grant is to target 40 people in the community that are considered long-term unemployed. The definition of long-term unemployed is over the state average currently, the average in the state on unemployment's 21 weeks. So anybody 22 weeks or over that's been unemployed is a target for this grant opportunity. This grant is fairly unique. It's coming from the federal government to the state in order to help address the unemployment problem in areas that have been hit pretty hard by unemployment. And the unique thing about this grant is ordinarily, on the job training, which Councilman Conquero is pretty familiar with, we can only reimburse 50% of the wages of the companies that hire these long-term unemployed people. Under this grant, we can actually reimburse up to 90% of the wages of people that go into this training. The training itself focuses on electronic medical records, this is the latest trend in the healthcare industry. It's an important industry for the Glendale area.
Is it specific for that job? Specifically for that job?
There are probably at least a dozen different types of jobs in that field and we're focusing on probably about a half dozen of those occupations. As I mentioned, healthcare is pretty important for the Glendale area. In a small geographic area, we have three major hospitals, it's the largest industry employer in the city, and we have over 1,000 doctors in the Glendale-Burbank area. And so all of the healthcare companies and employers are making that transition to electronic medical records, so it's going to be a huge growth opportunity, especially for people that are unemployed.
And where do they go and who do they call if they are interested in this training?
They can contact the Verdugo Job Center, we're located 1255 South Central Avenue. The phone number is 818-409-0476.
Phone number again, 409-0476?
Yes.
818. Okay, and it's for electronic records management for medical services?
Right, the conversion, the whole industry is basically moving toward a totally electronic format, so they would help in that transition.
And how many, how many positions would that, would that train? How many individuals are you foreseeing to train?
We're looking at 40 for the time being, but we're also in competition for other grants. We have another application out to the state that would cover an additional 50 workers.
And how will you be publicizing this item, other than tonight?
We have plans to talk to the employers in the community. We've done a survey already of about 230 physician offices to inform them about things that are coming up. We work closely with all four hospitals in the Glendale-Burbank area and so we're getting the word out about this.
Thank you.
Well, and I think the key is, you used the word competitive, so it was a competitive grant and obviously you as a grant writer managed to secure the funding.
Right.
Good work.
Again.
Again.
Yeah, especially during, you know, the state of the economy, the way it is, I think it's a, it's a great, it's a great program where we're getting funding in for the city to train our community members to go into new fields and get sustainable jobs, so congratulations, thank you for that, and I'll move the item at C1.
Thank you, Mr. Menucha. A roll call, please.
Councilmembers Menucha.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Friedman.
Yes, next item.
D is Director of Administrative Services Finance and Information Services Regarding Professional Services Agreement With Capital Accounting Partners LLC For The Citywide Cost Allocation Plan And Information Services Rate Study. D1 is a motion authorizing execution of a PSA with Capital Accounting Partners LLC For The Citywide Cost Allocation Plan In Amount Not To Exceed $63,000 For A Three-Year Period With Two One-Year Extension Options At $21,000 Per Year. At D2 is motion authorizing execution of a PSA with Capital Accounting Partners LLC For The Information Services Rate Study In Amount Not To Exceed $78,000 For A Three-Year Period With The Two One-Year Extension Options At $26,000 Per Year.
Okay, this item is the cost allocation for the internal service funds?
It's a two-piece item, excuse me. The basic citywide cost allocation plan is a very detailed plan where we distribute the overhead costs of the central service departments out to all the non-general fund departments.
Right.
That's the first part. The second part is the rate study for ISD where we compute for the different support services.
Right.
And staff do work with the consultant to come up with a number of PCs and support costs for the various departments.
And why do we need the support every year? They've been, they've done it for three years. Don't we have the basic information where we can build on the information that we have and continue internally instead of hiring professional services from outside?
Actually, we don't, and a couple of items to note on that. One, the cost is, while $21,000 is fairly nominal, there's proprietary software involved that we don't have access to. There's very complex algorithms that they use to spread the costs out. They use a two-pass methodology for the cost allocation plan that distributes through the first pass, the portions of the overhead, in which I actually get some in my department, even though I'm a provider, and then that's rolled in and pushed out to the non-general fund departments. We don't have access to that technology. Number two is that changes every year. We meet with all the central support departments, city attorneys, city clerk, treasury, so on and so forth, and we decide based off workload what that allocation spread is, and then that's built into the algorithms that the consultant uses to spread those costs. So for example, one easy one to think of is payroll. We use a percent of, I think 50% of the number of employees and a 50% of the number of paychecks and that type of thing to push out those costs. Some of the other departments are a lot more complicated in terms of the percent spread of what we use to calculate those costs and push them out to the departments. So involves a lot of the consultant's time, they, she comes down and really manages the process, we assist in meeting with the departments. And it's a similar process with the ISD rate studies. That's why they have been combined, because the rate study for ISD has to be done first and then that rolls into the cost allocation plan.
Okay, can, are there reports that indicate what is being allocated where?
Absolutely.
Can we get, can we get a copy of those reports?
You can, it's about this thick.
Email it to me.
Okay, we can do that.
If you have it in electronic format.
We have it in electronic format.
If not, we just had a job training thing, we can, we can train someone to...
I was just saying, you may blow up your email, it's a big file, but we can certainly do that.
And with the, with the automatic extensions, is that necessary? I would like, I would like you to come back and get the authorization for the extensions. Do you have, do you need the two additional years of automatic extensions after the three, the initial three-year period is over?
It's helpful to do, we don't necessarily have to have it, we would go through an RFP process. The fact that we were able to negotiate the fee being flat for not only three years but five years with no escalators, we thought was a pretty good deal to lock that in for up to five years, so I think it's beneficial to us. I can tell you, when I was at our city, sister city next door, the cost was a lot higher and had escalators generally from year to year, so we thought this was a pretty good deal to move forward.
Okay, thank you. I'll move, can we move both items at once?
I'll move both, D1 and 2.
A roll call.
Councilmembers Menucha.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Friedman.
Yes, next item.
A 5E is Director of Public Works Regarding Carpet Replacement Of Various City Buildings In Connection With Spec. 3443. At 1 is a motion awarding the contract to Electro Construction Corporation in amount not to exceed $287,813 and rejecting all other bids.
Mr. Menucha.
Yes, I looked up the Electro Construction Corporation and it lists them as electrical designers. Why are they, why are we awarding a carpet replacement to electrical designers?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, they hold an electrical contractor's license, they hold a general contractor's license, they hold a series of licenses, they have done significant work for the city of all types, including all of the trades, and they're certainly qualified to do this work and gave us an excellent bid. So likely what they'll do is they'll hire a sub to help them to do this work, but nonetheless, the cost was, was excellent, we didn't even actually have any other bidders. So this firm...
Wait, for carpet replacement, we didn't have other bidders?
We did not.
That's surprising, actually.
It is surprising to us as well, Mr. Menucha, but there's a couple of firms that we do business with on a fairly regular basis, but for whatever reason, they chose not to bid on this job.
It says rejecting all other bids.
Which is none.
So we're not rejecting any bids?
Really not, no.
It's the only bid we receive?
It's the only bid we...
How do we know we're getting a good price on this item?
Because our estimate is pretty tight and they were 15% below our estimate, so we're pretty comfortable with this particular, this particular bid.
And how long will it take for them to replace all these cars? I know it's not just one building.
Well, some of the work will be done concurrently, but if you look on page, the second page of the report, we put the specific days for each of the, each of the facilities that we're going to do. So you're looking at somewhere around six weeks.
Okay.
To complete all these, and that depends on our ability to logistics, because some of this work may be done in off-hours, weekends, evenings, and that kind of thing, so that we don't interrupt regular business.
Okay, thank you.
Najarian.
Mr. Garcia, are there any names for conflict check available on this?
No, Councilmember Najarian, remember the projects that are bid, competitively bid, we don't, they're not subject to the campaign finance ordinance.
Hey, do we have a motion?
I'll move it.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Menucha.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Friedman.
Yes, next item.
Next is oral communications, this is the three-minute community event announcement portion. The full five-minute oral communications will be at the end of the meeting after conclusion of all city business.
Thank you. My first card is Marilyn Gunell, followed by Ron Farina. And Ms. Gunell, may I say it's very nice to see you here.
Thank you very much, it's a pleasure to be here. I am a 39-plus-year resident of Glendale and I'm here this evening in my capacity as a member of the Board of the Glendale YWCA. What I want to talk a little bit about tonight is the problem of domestic violence. As we know, it is no respecter of age, of education, of race, of religion, or any other socioeconomic condition or status. If you can imagine, in your wildest horrifying nightmare, being a man, which is not as common certainly, but not unheard of, or more commonly, a woman who is being abused mentally, physically, being beaten, tormented, sexually abused by her domestic partner, boyfriend, or spouse, and finally cannot take it anymore and runs out of her home in the dead of night with the clothes on her back, the few cents in her purse, and the diaper on her baby, and looks for help. And she finds that help through the Glendale YWCA Domestic Violence Program. This evening, I would like to invite community members to attend a program cosponsored by the YWCA and the Commission on the Status of Women. It is a domestic violence candlelight vigil taking place next week on Thursday evening, October 20th, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. at the YWCA located on Lexington Drive, number 735, across the street from Whole Foods, in the Regency Room of the YW. And I want to say that if anyone is in need of help, they can call and I'll repeat the number twice, 818-242-4155, extension 227. Again, 818-242-4155, extension 227. And they will get help there. And also on the recording, it will give other extensions and numbers to call. So I will hope that many members of our community, and some of you as well, will attend this to honor the women who have been abused and have run away and taken the brave step of getting help. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Farina to be followed by Leon Mayer.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council members and city staff. I'm Ron Farina, Executive Director of the American Red Cross Glendale Crescent Valley Chapter. Happy occasion coming up on Sunday, November 6th, is the 20th Annual Fritz Coleman Comedy Night. Yes, it's been 20 years since this first started in the aftermath of the College Hills Fire as a fundraiser for Red Cross, and it's been going strong. This year, we're having two shows on Sunday, November 6th, one at 5:30, one at 7:30. The pre-event price is still $25 per ticket. Fritz Coleman does a wonderful job. If you haven't been there, he lines up about four comedians for the evening, and there's a, just a wonderful sense of community there. It's a, it's a wonderful show. You never know who's going to be there. Fritz is always keeping us waiting until the last minute. Sometimes there's up-and-coming stars, sometimes there's veteran comedians. It's going to be held at the Glendale Center Theater. It's a wonderful location, theater in the round, little difficult sometimes for comedians for the first minute till they're there, and then they warm up with the audience right away, but it's a great location to see these comedians in action. You get four of them for one show price. Again, at 5:30 and 7:30, Glendale Center Theater, 324 North Orange Street, which, as everybody knows, is behind Porto's. So invite you all to attend. And you can call the Red Cross office at 818-243-3121 for tickets or stop by. Thank you for this opportunity to promote the event.
Thank you. Leon Mayer, and my last card is Hazel Capnule.
Good evening, Mayor Friedman. My name is Leon Mayer. I'm here on behalf of the friends at Glendale Library, and we want to welcome everybody to our next event, which is October 26th, Wednesday, 7 o'clock at the Central Library. This event on that date will feature Big John McCarthy. He's the famous referee of mixed martial arts. He's refereed 500 bouts, and him and Loretta Hunt, a well-known sports journalist, have authored his book, and he will talk about it and his experience in mixed martial arts. And the full title of the book is "Let's Get It On," and that's an expression he uses before he starts the professional UFA bouts that he has refereed all these years. Should be an interesting evening. We've already invited several of the martial arts classes and clubs in the area, the YMCA, the Hometman, the Glendale Fighting Club, the Main Event Gym, and Hayastan MMA Academy, and I'll get ahold of some more, and we'll invite them. But those who hear about this tonight, please tell people who you know are interested, even though you might not be interested, in coming to the event October 26th. I have flyers here tonight, and you can get flyers at the Glendale Library. Incidentally, this Saturday, in competition with the Canines and the Ducks, they're going to have a furniture and book sale at the library from about 10 o'clock to 4 o'clock at the rear loading dock. So we'll take the overflow from the Ducks and the Canines and give you some real bargains then. Thank you very much. Bye.
Thank you. Hazel Capnule's my last card.
Evening, may I ask the councilors. This is a reminder to the Rossmoyn homeowners that a meeting is scheduled for tomorrow night to discuss the designation of Rossmoyn area as a historical area. It is being held at the Municipal Service Building, 633 East Broadway, hearing room first floor. The time is 6:30 to 8:30. There is another meeting of the Historic Preservation Committee on Monday, October the 24th at 2 p.m. I suggest you all come and have your answers, your questions answered about the viability of having this declared as a homeowners, as a historical area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That was my last card for this portion of oral communications. What's next, please?
Agenda under city business at 9A is hearings. 9A is Director of Community Development regarding resolution of necessity declaring the public need to acquire property commonly referred to as Lot 22 through eminent domain. 9A1 is a resolution declaring public interest and necessity to condemn property. 9A2 is a resolution appropriating $24,000 to provide funds necessary for court deposit.
Okay, are we going to Mr. Lanzaphane?
Ms. Mayor, members of the city council, we're here before you with a very unusual situation where the staff is going to recommend that the city council condemn property from the redevelopment agency for a approximately 3,900-square-foot remnant parcel that is currently Orange Street. Lot 22, which we refer to as 3,900 square feet, it's at the northerly terminus of Orange where it meets with Caruso Avenue. With the conditional vacation of Orange Street, Lot 22 becomes a virtually landlocked remnant parcel with limited access over a street via public easements. Property is adjacent to the green, that is the public open space that is owned now by the city at the Americana brand. It has a value of $24,000 prepared by an independent appraiser. Title to the green was transferred from the redevelopment agency to the city in March. As I say, this is a remnant parcel. The purpose of the acquisition is to expand the city's open space, it is adjacent to the green, and also to control the land use from that parcel from now and into the future. Typically, the agency would be authorized to enter into this agreement, this transaction with the city, but with the Supreme Court's stay on legislation that was adopted in June, the agency is precluded from doing that. However, the stay does not preclude the city from acquiring the property through eminent domain. It's important from the city's perspective to control this property in the future. Should what we refer to as AB 26 be upheld and AB 27 found unconstitutional, the redevelopment agency would cease to exist. The property would then be sold to a third party, which could not, may not be the city. That might create a lot of trouble and havoc in the way the surrounding properties operate. In addition, staff feels that we're in kind of a no harm, no foul situation if the city were to acquire this property, because if the redevelopment agency did go away, we would simply be doing what the legislation had intended, that is disposing of the property at a fair market value. For these reasons, staff is recommending that the city council adopt a resolution of necessity authorizing the acquisition through eminent domain. You must make four findings. Those are that the public interest and necessity require the proposed project. This would expand the green space and enhance land control, land use control by the city. The proposed project is planned and located in a manner that will be most compatible with the greatest public good and the least private injury. It is adjacent to the green, will increase the amount of open space. As I've noted before, the property has limited utility, and it's landlocked, it's a landlocked remnant. Third finding, that the property is necessary for the project. The project cannot be achieved, that is, the expansion of the open space and control of this particular remnant without the project, without acquiring this property, the project cannot be achieved. And finally, then, an offer has been made at fair market value. As I noted, we did have the property appraised. The redevelopment agency, while it received an offer, is precluded from accepting that offer. But again, note that the city is not precluded from acquiring it via eminent domain. For these reasons, staff is recommending your approval. This is an item that requires four-fifths of the council to vote in the affirmative. Should you adopt this resolution, we would file is, within the next couple of days to acquire the property. With that, legal staff and I are prepared to answer any of your questions.
Are there any questions?
I'll move 9A1 and 2.
It's a public hearing. Shouldn't we open and close it?
Let me open the public hearing.
Now, you want to close it?
Just move them separately, please.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. We have a motion then for the first item.
9A1.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmembers Menuchyan.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Wintaro.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Friedman.
Yes.
I'll move 9A2.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmembers Menuchyan.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Wintaro.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Friedman.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item.
Next item is oral communications. Discussion is limited, item is not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision, and city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for an investigation and report.
Thank you. My first card is Anahheh Pinedjian, followed by Shane Gregory or Gregor.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Laura Friedman, members of the council, members, staff, and the audience. I have, I have presented before the city's meeting my complaint, many incident of being harassed by the tenant who have written the letters to the owner of the building complaining that we are not getting along with other tenants. Last month, I brought up another incident of trawling breadcrumb as trash in my door mat in late night by the tenant. Today, I would like to bring to your attention another incident, which is neighborhood disturbance that happened last Sunday, October 9th, around 10 p.m. My next-door tenant, unit number C, the couple who moved in last year in October. I presented also on July, the husband unlawful act, how he behaved aggressively as tough, hitting forcefully on our door for while we are looking out from our window to parking structure, insulted and threatened us. The same day, we heard the unusual noise of yelling, screaming, and a strange noise of hitting on door, and the wall shared it with us. It's like shaking the walls. The couple were insulting each other in Armenian language, the female referring to his husband the bad expression. She was screaming and crying very loudly and asking for help. As neighbors, we were scared, and I opened the door, my door. It is like neighborhood disturbance. I saw also the downstairs neighbor, unit number A, the lady was looking up to me and made a facial gesture to me to stay silent. But the noise strange was disturbing us. I knocked the door. The husband opened the door. Instead of making apology very aggressively, ready to assault on us, said, "It is not your business." We are the aggravated tenants. The disturbed action of the other tenant has amounted to a breach of our right to quiet enjoyment. Moreover, addressing the letter to my landlord that we are not getting along with other tenant, you can imagine their false accusation. Last year, when the other tenant who made a scandal, assault, and battery, and one of the neighbor called the police, later I heard that the owner of the building did not like that. How then can it be resolved? Thank you for listening, but I would like to ask for your help in this matter.
Thank you. Shane Gregor, followed by Harry Zavos.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council. My name is Shane Gregory. And I'm here tonight to talk to you about the issue of smart meters. I am a resident of Burbank for the next three weeks. I've lived in the city of Burbank, shopped, come to Glendale regularly during those 23 years, and unfortunately, those days are over for me. On July 28th, Burbank Water and Power installed a bank of General Electric meters on the side of my building. I had no idea what a smart meter was. Within about a day, I began to feel the physical effects of the smart meter. I developed a band-like headache, nausea, heart palpitations, and an odd kind of irritability that came out of nowhere. I thought I might be coming down with the flu. The odd thing about this is that when I left the city of Burbank, my flu went away. I came back, the flu came back. I have been living out of my car since August 2nd. That makes it over 60 days now, and I am unable to tolerate the physical effects from these meters. I've spent a lot of time researching it, and in my hand, I have letters from distinguished physicians from all over the world, including Albany, University of Albany, Carolin'ska Institute, Hebrew University, and the list goes on. My belief is that these meters are unresearched, or they've not been properly researched, and the effects on human health have not been examined. Neighbors to the right of me are complaining of insomnia, headaches. The children are agitated. One woman can't sleep in her bedroom, and unbeknownst to her, she has eight meters directly below her, her sleeping space. This has been an incredible time of upheaval for me. I'm losing my home of 23 years. I have to leave my community. This is hugely sorrowful for me. My mother, my elderly mother, lives in the neighborhood. I cannot stay where I live. It is impossible. I am imploring you to do some independent research, to look into this matter more deeply. Although I am a resident of Burbank, it still affects each and every one of you who live in the, in the city of Glendale. And I believe that my human rights, my civil rights have been violated in the worst possible way. I've gone to my local utility, Burbank Water and Power, and they suggested that I move. This is America 2011, just move. But they also offered me a free refrigerator. So I'm kind of confused on their, their point of reasoning. I also approached my city council, and their conclusion was that the utility had done a poor job of gaining public trust. This is not a matter of trust. This is a matter of human biology. This is a matter of something that has not been properly researched. The California Council on Science and Technology and EPRI, upon whom Burbank Water and Power, Glendale Water and Power, and a lot of other utilities rely, have very strong ties to the utilities industries, the telecommunications, and to the financial sector. There are very few physicians on board. This is really a tragedy in the making. Three to 25% of us are considered to be electosensitive to one degree or another. I may be an extreme, but literally 100% of the occupants of my building, plus 30% of the occupants to the right of me, and 30% of the occupants to the left of me, are all suffering. This is within a half-city block, and I despair at our future. I have two places open to me. I'm a native of California. I've gone to, I went to UCLA. This is my home, and I am being forced to leave. I can live in LADWP territory for a short period of time, they don't have the meters yet, and Pasadena City, but other than that, I have no place. I cannot stay, and this is wrong, and I beg you, beg you, to do some independent research, independent thinking, because I'm not the, I may be the first you've heard from, but I will not be the last. California Public Utilities Commission has logged thousands of health complaints, and your beautiful little city is imperiled. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Harry Zavos to be followed by Mike Mohill.
Counsel, my name is Harry Zavos. I'm a citizen of Glendale, and earlier today, I came here to indicate that I thought the Wylden proposed restructuring of the water rates violated the water code. And that was based on the fact that Water Code Section 372 provides that a basic use allocation is established for each customer account that provides a reasonable amount of water for the customer's needs and property characteristics. Then a basic charge is imposed on all water used within the customer's basic use allocation, and then finally, a comp... And then finally, a conservation charge shall be imposed on all increments of water use in excess of the basic use allocation. And I may misunderstood, but at a meeting with GWP, I was under the impression that the basic use allocation, and incidentally, when I talked about why it violated the water code, I used the single-family classification with its five ascending tiers of water rates as an example. I understood that the first tier was predicated on a formula of 55 gallons times 2.5, which is the average number of occupants in a single-family residence. At the time, because it was just brought in at the time and just distributed to the council, I was not privy to Slide 22 that was to be part of that presentation, which indicates the makeup of those five tiers. And now I'm somewhat confused because those five tiers don't indicate anything about customer needs. The first two tiers are predicated on the use of groundwater, which I understand is cheaper than metropolitan water, district water. The third tier is based on groundwater production and MWD water. And the next two tiers are based only on MWD water production. There's nothing in here which indicates how in structuring this rate structure, the requirements of Water Code 372 were taken into account, namely, determining the reasonable amount of water to meet a particular customer's needs. Secondly, I have no idea as to what has you go from Tier 1 to Tier 2, since in both of those tiers, it indicates they're using groundwater. Now, in the third tier, I can understand a differential in cost based on the fact it's part groundwater, part MWD water. But then the next two tiers, it's all MWD water. And I don't understand why there's a different rate if the same, it's the same water, MWD water. Nothing about how you go from one tier to the other. In addition to that, as I'm sure the city attorney knows, in a recent August decision by the appellate court, the appellate court said that compliance with Water Code 372, and I don't know whether there is compliance, because again, understand what went into calculating these five tiers, does not relieve the city of its burden to show that it's complying with the proportionality requirement of Article 13D of the Constitution. And Mayor, you were very helpful. I gave you some questions. And as a result of that, I had a good meeting with Representatives of the City Attorney's Office and with members of the City Attorney's Office. It would be quite helpful if I could have a similar meeting and find out exactly how these tiers were calculated, how they took into considerations the requirement of Water Code Section 372, subsection A, subsection 2, and exactly why there is a different tier when the same water is being used, why there's a different tier, different rate between Tier 1 and Tier 2 when both of them are using groundwater, why there's a different tier rate between Tier 4 and Tier 5 when they're using metropolitan water district rate, and why Tier 4 and 5 have no allocation for groundwater at all. So I'm just asking if I could have that kind of meeting so this could be explained. I have no interest in doing other than ensuring that the law is complied with. And if in fact, an explanation is given that indicates how these factors were part of the formula, then I'll be satisfied.
Mr. Zavos, I'd be happy to set that up.
Okay, thank you very much, Mayor.
Mike Mohill, followed by Teri Schlatter.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, staff, and the viewing public. My name is Mike Mohill, 33-year resident of Glendale. Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a public apology to you personally for what I said last week. Please accept my sincere apology. Thank you. It is now 7:15 in the afternoon, in the evening, about, and we're having this discussion called oral communication. But 2:30 in the afternoon today, one of the most important issues of the city was discussed. And it was called the water rates for the city of Glendale. It was arranged late in the afternoon so the good folks back home who are working wouldn't be here. There's only a couple of speakers who spoke about this issue because the working folks are trying to make a living. So for that, I'm going to read part of my speech for the public. Glendale Water Rates. The majority of the water rates increased before the council will be on the fixed cost, which is the customer charge located on Page 3, ladies and gentlemen, of our GWP bill. Water customer charge is water line to a resident's home and the administrative cost. In 2007, the water customer charge was $14.30. And today, ladies and gentlemen, it is $31.32. The rate has doubled in just four little years. If a resident does not use any water, one's future bill will still go up because of the fixed customer water charge. This, ladies and gentlemen, has nothing to do with water conservation. Water rate increases. In 2007, it was 9%. In 2008, it was 14%. In 2009, it was 12%. And in November 2010, we raised it another $3.8%. Even though the Glendale residents during this drought months saved over 18% in water conservation. Total rate increase since 2007 is 38.8%. Now, the city is again proposing to increase our water rates 21% by 2015. The 38% water rate increase since 2007, plus a proposed 21% rate increase, will mean a 59.8% rate increase by 2015. Now you know why people are leaving Glendale in the droves thousands have. Look at our recent figures. Am I mad? No. Why should I be mad? I'm trying to survive. Mr. City Attorney, Mr. Garcia, please. I would hope you would please advise counsel on this serious matter before us. These proposed rate increases are unnecessary and are a clear violation of Proposition 218? Well, the public has no vote, no vote, on this rate increase. And just a notification, sir, is not valid. May I state it again? It is not the same a notification as a vote. Also, these proposed rate increases are in violation of the California Code 372 regarding tier systems. Counsel members, please. Do we really want another lawsuit by the public? I'm also going to talk about the fact that in 2001, when I was here last week, I believe it was the week before, we talked about the fact that the city had $250 million in the GWT reserve account to deal with stranded investments like contracts with different power plants. As the GWP was going through deregulation, since deregulation never went through, what happened to all that money? Hello, I'm only a rig payer and a taxpayer and a citizen of Glendale. Can we get some answer from the GWP? Is that word, silence is golden? Another thing, how much do we have in the reserve account that is uncommitted and unrestricted? Thank you. My name is Mike Mohill. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Teri Schlatter, followed by Betty Gustafson.
Good evening. My name is Teri Schlatter, and I have been a Glendale resident for over 30 years. I am here tonight to address the installation of the smart meters by Glendale Water and Power. Over the years, I have been faced with making some decisions on my use of the latest technology to surface. For my own personal reasons, I have decided not to use wireless technology in my home. I use corded phones, not cordless phones. I use a stove and oven to do my cooking, not a microwave. I use a hardwired modem for my internet connection, not a wireless router. And when I need to use a cellphone, I use a special corded headset. These are all choices I have made for myself, just as others have made their own choices about these devices. In regards to the recent smart meter grid rollout, I have some serious concerns. My objection to this rollout is fourfold. Number one, why wasn't I given a choice to opt out of this program? I regularly read the publications sent to my home from Glendale Water and Power and recall reading all of the so-called benefits of the program. But I do not recall ever seeing an option or a method to opt out of this program. As I understand it, the Federal Energy Policy Act of 2005 only mandated utilities to offer the meters and to install them upon consumer request. I feel that my rights have been violated since I had no say in this decision to install a smart meter at my home. Number two, what are the long-term cumulative effects of this ever-increasing exposure to electromagnetic and radio frequency energy? And what studies were done by Glendale Water and Power to ensure consumer safety and/or compliance with Environmental Protection Agency standards? My personal experience is that ever since my smart meter was installed, I have suffered from interruption of my sleep, heart palpitations, tingling sensations in my abdomen, and headaches. Number three, I view the installation of these smart meters as an invasion of my privacy. My habits are being monitored without my consent. And these smart meters are essentially a surveillance device. Number four, I understand from others that the city has not been forthcoming in releasing any financial information on the smart meter rollout and the financial benefit, if any, on our city and its shareholders, the citizens. The mayor and city council are accountable to the citizens of Glendale, who elect you to represent them and to protect them. You have the responsibility for and an interest in promoting good corporate governance and safeguarding environmental and social concerns. This means that it is your responsibility to ensure that citizens are not endangered by any of your decisions. If that means delaying those decisions, so be it. It is my belief that this smart meter rollout was not well thought out or evaluated. Citizens were not given all the facts. The smart meter program and grid were forced on all of us, exposing us to constant electromagnetic pulses that you simply cannot escape. It is my recommendation that the city council obtain the input of various experts on both sides of this issue, determine the full impact of this program on our residents. When you do that, I believe you will reverse your position on smart meters and return to the analog meters that have served us well over the years. And as my final comment, we want to invite the city council, Glendale residents, and anyone else interested in this issue to join us at a forum on the dangers of smart meters to be held on Thursday, November 10th, at 7:00 p.m. at the Moose Lodge in Glendale. The address is 357 West Arden, which is two blocks north of the 134 freeway between Pacific and Central Avenues. Thank you.
Thank you. Betty Gustafson, followed by Tony Passarella.
Good evening. My name is Betty Gustafson, and I have been a resident of Glendale for almost 20 years. I am here to talk about smart meters as well. As you know, over the last decade, there have been tremendous technological advances. This has imposed all of us to ever-increasing levels of electromagnetic field emissions and pulsed radio frequency radiation on a 24/7 basis. And now, adverse health effects have been widely reported to the CPUC after installation of these new smart meters throughout the state of California. According to Daniel Hesch, a University of California nuclear expert, in a report found on the internet, issued January 2011, smart meters contain 100 times more radio frequencies exposure than cell phones. Given all this information, my choices have been to avoid or minimize my radiation exposure. For example, I don't use even, I don't use or even have a microwave oven. I don't use wireless modems. When traveling, I opt out of the TSA full-body scanners. Even my use of cell phones is very limited. And when I do use it, I am protected with an AirTube headset. These are the choices I have made. The problem with these smart meters is I didn't have a choice. It was forced on me. I have been very healthy all my life, rarely sick, and always slept like a baby. But ever since the smart meter was installed, I have experienced interruption of my sleep, waking up several times during the night with feelings of agitation and unable to go back to sleep right away. Sometimes I lay there for an hour or more. And sometimes, I have to just get up. I also frequently experiencing, I experience tingling sensations in my legs and pulsating siren-like noises in my ears. I never experienced any of these problems before the smart meter was installed. Through my research, I have found there are many counties within California who are opposed to the mandatory wireless smart meter project. These counties include Humboldt County, Lake County, Marin County, Mendocino County, San Francisco County, San Luis Obispo County, Santa Barbara County, Santa Cruz County, and Sonoma County. In addition, there are numerous cities and towns that oppose smart meters, some of which have passed ordinances or moratoriums making these installations illegal. These areas represent a population count over 2.5 million people. I have the minutes from three different meetings from some of these areas, as well as a copy of the report by Daniel Hesch, the nuclear expert, for the council members' review. So for the sake of our citizens, your families, and our future generations, I hope you rethink this whole project and return to the analog meters as soon as possible. And in closing, the public and all the city council members are invited to join at the Smart Meter Forum on Thursday, November 10th, at the Moose Lodge in Glendale at 7:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony Passarella, followed by Bill Weissman.
Good evening, Mayor Friedman, council members and staff. My name is Tony Passarella, and I'm a 25-year resident of the city of Glendale. And my story is similar to the ladies that spoke just before me. I cannot sleep no longer in my bedroom. I am sleeping on the couch. I used to be able to sleep in my bedroom, but as a result of a bank or a cluster of smart meters that were put in in my complex of six meters, I would fall asleep, and after about two or three hours, wake up and be unable to fall back to sleep. I didn't connect the dots until I started investigating the smart meters in terms of other people having the same symptomologies with headaches and ringing in the ears. other people having the same symptomologies with headaches and ringing in the ears and insomnia and so forth. Daniel Hirsch, the lady before me referred to Daniel Hirsch, and I want to just read a couple of things off a report that he wrote. And this is responding to the California Council on Science and Technology. Daniel writes, “The cumulative whole-body exposure from smart meter at three feet appears to be approximately two orders of magnitude higher than that of a cellphone.” And that’s in the bold print. And he has graphs here, measuring cellphone whole-body, microwave oven over two feet, smart meter three feet, smart meter 10 feet away, Wi-Fi router three feet, FM radio three feet away, and so on. And he further adds in bold print here, “The smart meter thus would produce,” after his testing and his research, this is a nuclear professor at UC Santa Cruz, by the way, right? “The smart meter thus would produce 160 times more cumulative whole-body exposure than that of a cellphone.” The problem I have is that the Glendale website says just the opposite. It talks about the cellphone being far less radiation than a smart meter. And it has a diagram on the Q&amp;A section on some of the information, where the waves, it has two waves over the smart meters, and then it has a bunch of waves over a cellphone. And in there, it says, “We feel there are no health risks associated with smart meters.” So my problem is, the truth is somewhere. The truth lies somewhere. Is it Daniel Hirsch, this nuclear professor, saying it’s 100 times more? Or is it the GWP saying cellphones are worse than smart meters? What I want to propose, as the ladies before me, is let’s get to bottom of this. I mean, mayor and council members, you took an oath, and you are here to protect the community, the citizens of this community, to do the right thing. If we were oversold by the establishment, if GWP was oversold by the establishment, and if GWP oversold the council members and the mayor, then maybe there was a mistake made. So if there was a mistake made and all of the research hadn’t been done, the fact is that the smart meter is a pulsed non-thermal radiation. It’s not like a cell tower, it’s not like a cellphone. It’s a different, it comes in pulses. If you do the study like I have and the ladies before me have, and like many, many other people that we’ve researched on the internet, other than Daniel Hirsch, there’s hundreds of professors and engineers that are saying that it is a hazard, that there are privacy issues, that there are all kinds of issues with these smart meters. So please, I beg you, to at the very minimum, come up with some kind of opt-out for those that have this disease called hypersensitivity, which is called a disease by the World Health Organization. So this is a very real problem. These ladies before me have a very real issue, I have a very real issue. There’s people in this community that also have, they haven’t connected the dots because they don’t know, number one, they don’t know, they have a smart meter and they don’t know the effects. Thank you very much. My name is Tony Passarella. I’m with GlendaleAction.com.
Thank you. Bill Weisman. That’s my last card.
Good evening, Mayor Friedman, council members, city staff, and the public. My name is Bill Weisman, Far North Glendale, and I’m speaking tonight as a private citizen. I just wanted to mention a couple of things that are related to some of the transportation issues we have here in Glendale. And I wanted to note that last Friday, Governor Brown signed into law Assembly Bill 529, sponsored by our Assemblyman, Mr. Gatto. And what this bill is going to mean for Glendale is it gives us a little more flexibility in setting our speed limits. In terms of the way that speed limits are set by law in California based on an 85th percentile speed, this bill will actually allow rounding down five miles an hour instead of rounding up. And so it, one of the things is, if we do do that and we do reduce the speed, we can no longer reduce it past that limit, but it does give us another possible tool that we can use dealing with speeding. The second thing I wanted to mention was participated last Sunday in Siquehla Villa in the city of Los Angeles, and it was really a great event. They closed down about, I would say, 20, 22 miles of city streets, and opened it up to bicyclists and unicyclists and pedestrians and skateboarders and everything you can possibly imagine. It’s starting to look almost like a little bit like a Duda Parade on wheels. But it’s really a wonderful event where people get to experience their community on two or four or however many wheels without having to worry about deadly or injurious interactions with cars. And I will note that just yesterday, we had a 13-year-old on a bicycle who was struck by a hit-and-run driver right over here at Jackson and Wilson. So we still need to try to continually improve our situation with pedestrian and traffic safety. The last thing I wanted to mention is that some of you may recall that at one time, Glendale had a Human Relations Coalition. The Human Relations, the Glendale Human Relations Coalition is being revived. The original mission statement was adopted back in 2001, and there were some issues with the organization because it was never able to get its 501(c)(3) tax-exempt status. The GHRC has been reconstituted. My wife is one of the reconstitutors. Lenore Solis is another. Dick Sealy, Marilyn Ginnell, who was here earlier this evening, and a number of other interested community activist people are involved. We’re going to be at Unity Fest. Look for us at the Purple Canopy. We have now been recognized as a California nonprofit corporation, and our application is in for 501(c)(3) status with the Internal Revenue Service. And if you’d like to stop by and talk with us and sign up for our email list, we want to collect as many names as we can. The mission statement, it remains the same one that was adopted in 2001. “The Glendale Human Relations Coalition understands, appreciates, and respects the value of our city’s diversity. Together, we work vigorously to promote community harmony, provide a united response to hate crimes, and speak out against prejudice and discrimination.” And that’s what we’re about. And I guess, having a minute or so remaining, there is one thing I want to mention, and I don’t in any way mean to disparage anyone who has any issues with devices that use microwave radio communication. But right here in this room, if you turn around, there’s a wireless access point right up here on this wall. There’s another wireless access point up here on this wall. There’s two different Wi-Fi networks in this room. They are using the same exact frequencies and roughly the same power levels as smart meters do. And so being here right now was no different from sitting in a room under a couple of smart meters. The smart meters actually use pulsed communication, and the pulses are very brief. These devices up here behind me, they are broadcasting continually. And so if anyone is having a problem with smart meters, I would be very cautious about coming into this room, or coming into a Starbucks, or coming into a Panera, or coming into anybody else’s home that has Wi-Fi set up, because they’re being exposed to the same things. And by the way, medical science does not recognize any such condition as electromagnetic hypersensitivity. I know some people don’t like to hear that. Don’t blame the messenger, you can look it up on Wikipedia. The reason is, when you test it, it is found not to exist. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments from anybody? Mr. Najarian?
To Ms. Penagen, I think the important thing is that if she sees a disturbance involving domestic violence, that she not get involved, that she not go and knock on the perpetrator’s door, or in any way insert herself into the conflict, that she should immediately call 911 and report the disturbance, and let our trained police officers handle the situation. Because I know a lot of bystanders, innocent bystanders, get drawn in, and they often become secondary victims to the situation. Thank you, Mr. Weisman, for pointing out the radio frequency transmitters in this room, and I mentioned that a few meetings ago, and scoffed at, was scoffed at. I purchased a radio frequency blocker that I place on the back of my cellphone, which is purported to block the radio frequency and redirect it away from the body when you’re using the phone. I’d like to know, we don’t have a science officer. I don’t know if there’s anyone close.
Mr. Zern is actually, Mr. Zern is a close.
I don’t, I don’t know if we have anything close to that, but what I’d like to know is if someone could come back and report whether there’s something similar that can be placed in households, which can block the frequency, at least from the sleeping areas or the areas where residents will spend a lot of their time, so that the, and I don’t know if that’s a, whether these waves are the type that can be blocked or redirected, but if such a material is available, I’d like to know if such is the case, and perhaps give a, give that report to the public while we, I don’t want to say while we debate the smart meters, but while the investigation and discovery as to the effects of the smart meters are ongoing. I don’t know if anyone would support that.
Mr. Menoakian?
Yes, I disagree with Mr. Weisman. I do believe that electromagnetic, allergic reactions to electromagnetic radiation has been tested, and I’ve seen the test, and I’ve seen the results on, no, not, not you, but, I mean, you said, you said that Wikipedia doesn’t recognize it, but I did mention a study that was done, a scientific study that has been published, that recognizes it and measures it. So I do believe that electromagnetic, allergic reaction to electromagnetic radiation does exist, and it has been measured. I am in generally opposed to smart meters. I think there are alternatives to using it, and, and I do believe that it will be coming back to the council, Mr. Starbitt, at one point in terms of opting out, the opting-out option, and the option that I presented today in terms of moving the smart meters away from, on the other side of a bedroom wall, let’s say, where you can have a cluster of smart meters that are emitting the radiation.
You had asked for the information to come back, and we’ll gather it for you and bring it back. One was on the ability of residents to move their meter.
Right.
Not necessarily on GWP moving meters.
Right.
The other one was, remind me of the second one.
Opting out.
Yes, the opting out.
Yeah, opting out option.
What’s coming back to you is the implications of people who choose to opt out, because that then will require a physical reading of meters.
And, and in general, in general, my approach is where there’s smoke, there’s fire. I understand that there’s, there’s a lot of different discussions regarding the smart meters. There was a, there was a time when there was a lot of discussion about smoking as well, and I do recall some slew of CEOs that were up at, was it a senate hearing or a senate hearing? Where they said there was, there was no study that linked lung cancer to smoking. Now, some of them are in jail now, I think, because they lied in front of Congress. But the prudent thing to do for the community is to look further into it and study it more. If there are issues that we should be concerned about, certainly we should address it as a council elected by the community, so.
Dr. Quintero, anything?
Well, I just want to remind everybody that Sunday is Unity Fest, and it’s the 10th anniversary of Unity Fest. I hope that everyone will come and make it the best festival we’ve had yet. It’s on Bram Boulevard from 12 to 5. The road will be closed, and there’ll be lots of great activities celebrating multiculturalism and diversity. Hope to see you all there.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Adjourn.